Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 16th meeting of the City of Glens Falls Planning Board Special Session. This is Site Plan Final Review 230018 pursuant to City Code Chapter 220-8DTC, Subsection 16, Hoffman Development Corporation Advocate, representing the owner of Steve's V Incorporated, of Tax Map Number 309.11-5-42, commonly known as 194 Broad Street, seeking final site plan review to address traffic study and water and sewer recommendations prior to planning board's prior conditional approval to Hoffman car wash. I will start with the consultant for the Hoffmans, Frank Colombo.
Okay, thank you.
For the record.
For the record, Frank Colombo, Landscape Architect with CT Mail Associates and project manager on this for Hoffman's. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Before we get started, just for the record, I will run the meeting, but I will be recusing myself from voting due to a conflict with employment for an adjoining property.
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Okay, first off, and thank you to all the board members that could be here for a special session. It's very important to us and the landowner to try to keep this, get this to the final here. The few items, I know that there are some letters that will probably be read to you or that you may have already received relating to some of the topics. And since the approval that, which was at that point in time back in February, there were a couple of conditions on that, and we're going to talk about what those were. I'm going to start out with the water and sewer, just to run through that very, very quickly. I think the biggest issue area was the traffic analysis and the review of that. And so Alana Moran from VHB will be able to answer some of your questions, if there are some. So, just for the, quickly on the water and sewer, I want to thank the Water and Sewer Department, Bill Norton, the city engineer, Jeremy Snabble. They were very helpful in helping to set up the water flow tests, the pressure tests, and also the sewer analysis. So, I think you have a letter that is their summary, that they found that everything we did, I'll just tell you what we did, very quickly. So, we did pressure tests as they had indicated on three hydrants in the vicinity, with the main one being right across the street. And we did those tests and found very, very acceptable values on those pressures, and then did the flow test in terms of if it was drawn upon heavy, that there was enough water there. The full amount of that was again reviewed, all this was data was taken, we get it, they had to be there to inspect and see that we were doing it, so there's no, we said this and it was something else. Everybody was there witnessing it and knowing what was going on. So, the result report was provided to them with that new data, and they reviewed it, and I'll just paraphrase by saying they found it acceptably done. On the sewer issue, it was a little interesting. What we found was, so they had asked us to do a CCTV of the line, and also to clean it, and so they jet cleaned water pushed up to clear out the line, so that you can get a good flow of the camera, you know, through there. And what was discovered is, so we are connecting at this point here, and there's a manhole above us and a manhole below us, but we went at their request, all the way down to the line at the intersection with Hudson Avenue. So, it was 1,460 feet, I believe, that we inspected. And it was, at some points, very, very clogged up, other things that greased, that had done some blockage of the pipes. We, the jetting though, cleaned that out, got it all out. We had had mapping that suggested that the line we were tying into was an eight-inch line. It was probably acting as an eight-inch line, because it was that, like that clogged inside, with that much around the pipe. It actually is a 12-inch line. So, after they did all the cleaning, they ran the camera, it's on a little motorized wheel, that takes it right up the pipe, and in general, what they saw was that the typical flow was about 10% of the capacity of the pipe. Now, we know there will be peaks and everything else, but certainly the pipes are well cleaned, well open for the full usage of that. And again, the, our report was issued, and they reviewed it and found that the sewer system really is well in capacity of the volumes that we're sending into it. And now, actually into, because that was done, it's actually a little bit of betterment from what it was before. So, those were the two items. Again, we rely on the letter from the city, who reviewed that information and was there at the time we were doing it. So, there was nothing that, we didn't fabricate anything here.
Mr. Colombo, can I repeat into the record?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. So, on today's date, the Water Sewer Department and Engineering Department issued a joint letter. It's addressed to Mr. Hall and planning board members, and it reads, "Subsequent to a comment letter prepared by the Water Sewer Department and Engineering Department dated February 2, 2024, we are pleased to provide the planning board with the following updates for outstanding items associated with the above referenced application. Number one, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, Stormwater Management Plan. The applicant has prepared a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan SWIP for review by the Engineering Department. After review, the SWIP was determined to be acceptable by the city. Number two, sanitary sewer capacity. The applicant was required to clean and inspect the sanitary sewer to determine condition and ability to serve this project. On April 9th and 10th, 2024, Kenyon Pipeline Inspection cleaned and inspected approximately 1,460 linear feet of sewer along Broad Street between southwestern avenue of Thomas Street and Hudson Avenue using closed circuit television robotic equipment. The video footage was provided to the city and revealed that the existing sewer is in good condition. Inspection also revealed that the sanitary sewer is larger than the city records show, 12 inches in diameter, not eight-inch diameter. The city finds no evidence to refute the findings and conclusions of the Water and Sewer Engineers Report, prepared by CT Mail Associates dated February 6, 2024, last revised April 15, 2024, which suggests the proposed project will not impact surrounding sewer users. Number three, water distribution system capacity. The applicant was required to perform hydrant flow testing to determine existing flow and pressure characteristics of the water distribution system in the area. On April 2, 2024, and on April 12, 2024, the city staff operated hydrants while CT Mail Associates collected data. The city finds no evidence to refute the findings and conclusions of the Water and Sewer Engineers Report, prepared by CT Mail Associates dated February 6, and last revised April 15, 2024, which suggests the proposed project will not impact surrounding water users. And it says, "Please contact our office if you have any other questions." And it's signed by William C. Norton, Water and Sewer Superintendent, and Jeremy Schneidl, P.E., Engineering Department.
Thank you. So, as one of those conditions that was applied before, we think we've met that condition in any action that we might take, hopefully take at this point, that that condition would be no longer, you know, put in as a condition. That does not change anything, that as we go for the building permit, any of the connections will be overseen by the, by the department, the Building Department and the Engineering Department, so that that is done, and our details are on there, and they have seen those details as well. So, it doesn't change any of the regular processes that would take place. The next item, and probably the one that will have the most dialogue, was that we did go to the Safety Board and did not get a favorable recommendation. I was at that meeting and would be happy to answer any of the question, if there are questions about anything that was specifically at the meeting, I can at least give my, my take on that. What I would like to do, though, is that because it was primarily traffic related, I would like to have Alana come up and talk about what she did with the peer review that was done by Barton and La Judas, and I thank the staff that, that had helped to get that line and the peer review done. Thank you, Karen.
Would you like to speak to that?
Yep, so the Board of Public Safety issued an unfavorable opinion, and it looks like they dismissed the traffic study that was prepared and previously submitted with this application. As a result of that, the city undertook to have what's called a peer review of the applicant's traffic study. We contacted Aaron Frankenfeld, who operates, is it Adirondack?
Glens Falls.
Glens Falls, Adirondack.
AGFDC, Transportation.
Yes, okay. And so, he contacted three different engineering offices, and he decided that Barton and La Judas would be the contract agency to conduct a peer review of this applicant's traffic study. And they issued a report, April 1, 2024, and there were a couple items noted, which I think Alana is going to discuss or reference with you. But one of the, number two says, "The evaluation was completed," and when it says evaluation, it's referring to the prior traffic study, "was completed in accordance with industry accepted practices and methodology."
And I think that's important, is that there was some, I don't know, it was just some doubt as to how we had come up with the numbers, that we, you know, might have been just skewing it in our favor, and that's why the peer review was so important, to have another practitioner, who is savvy with how traffic studies are done, to do the review and, and evaluate that. And that statement is the one that says, "What you saw, what you heard last time, that information was validated." There were a couple of topic areas that they went, and those are the things that Alana will talk about.
Right, there was a minor typographical error on table four, however, this peer review states, "The level of service does not change." I believe you all got a copy of this report, and it's signed by Barton and La Judas, Daniel J. Rohr, P.E., Associate, and Peter J. Cristiano, P.E., Managing Engineer. So, now you're going to have more.
Alana, we'll, we'll talk about that now, with probably one of the biggest issues that they had, was us to do a gap analysis, but I'll let her explain that.
Okay.
And I'm going to flip this over, so at least, this is our site here, here's Broad Street, here's Hudson Down at this end, and here's the primary intersection of study just, just to the west of the, of the store, the wash.
And then after your individual speaks, I also reached out to Deputy Chief Modar of the Fire Department, I got him to comment relative to emergency vehicles, and we also reached out to Jared Smith, the Chief of Police for the Glens Falls Department, to get his input on this project as well.
And would you like Alana to go first, or would you like to?
We can have Alana go first.
Good evening. Again, my name is Alana Moran with VHB, I'm a professional engineer. We worked through completing the traffic analysis for the project. Last time we were here, you heard the summary of the traffic evaluation, and then it went through a peer review. That's not unusual, it's, it's normal to have a traffic evaluation, go through that review process. It provides a level of comfort to, to the board, that you're getting all the information that you need. And one of the things that a third-party reviewer may do is bring up some, not necessarily concerns, but just some additional pieces of information that you might be looking for as a review board. So, in this instance, as had been noted, the, the study was noted to have been completed per industry standards and practices, which is what we would have expected to hear. But the Barton and La Judas did raise a couple of items that are probably helpful for you all to have some additional information about. The first one being what, what Frank had mentioned as a gap evaluation. So, what a gap evaluation is, is that we actually measure the amount of time in seconds between vehicles as they cross a certain point. So, in this instance, it's where the driveway would be for the proposed project. And with that amount of time that's available between each of these cars, we're able to say, well, is that enough time for a vehicle to actually safely maneuver onto the roadway? So, we looked at the, is that enough time for a vehicle to actually safely maneuver onto the roadway? So, we looked at the available gaps in eastbound traffic for a vehicle that would be waiting in that two-way left turn lane and turning left into the site, so that's the first part. The second piece would be, if you're waiting at the exit and you're turning right and turning on, so heading eastbound from the site, and that's also a gap in eastbound traffic. And then the last thing we looked at was taking the left turn out of the site. So, in order to take the left turn out, you need a big enough gap in both directions of travel, and it actually takes a little bit longer to make that maneuver, just, it's a little bit bigger, and in this instance, we're crossing another traveling, so it takes a little bit longer. So, we looked at that data based upon the video files that we had of the traffic counts themselves. And during that time, from 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon for the PM peak, and then from 11:45 to 12:45 during the Saturday peak hour. So, to turn, to make a left turn into the site, there's roughly 30 to 32 vehicles that are being anticipated on a relatively regular basis, but the data is showing that there are enough, there are gaps of sufficient length to allow for 270 vehicles to, to make that left turn, or 350, depending upon whether you're in the Saturday, the PM peak hour or the Saturday peak hour. So, roughly eight to 10 times as many gaps are available as would be needed. Similarly, for that right town, right turn out maneuver, we're anticipating about 30 vehicles to make that move, and there are 222 during the PM peak hour, 243, so again, roughly like seven to eight times more gaps that are available, that are needed. The harder one, of course, is that, that left turn out of the site, just because it requires more time, because you're passing more traffic. We're anticipating 47 vehicles to turn left out of the site, and the data is showing that there are gaps of sufficient length to allow 80 vehicles to exit during the PM peak hour, and 95 during the Saturday peak hour. So, that's, that data is supporting the analysis, showing that there's sufficient gaps in traffic to allow turning movements entering and exiting the site. So, that was really the piece that, in the review, felt the most important for you all to understand. The other things that came through really were the safety questions, which I think were answered by both the police, the Chief of Police, and the Fire Chief, that they have people pull over, they're able to get through the corridor, and that there's not a sufficient crash history in the corridor, but there's been like seven crashes in the corridor since 2022, so it's not a high crash location that they worry about in this area.
Can, can you explain how the data is collected?
For which?
For, for the, you said the video, you watched, you said you did this by video.
Yes.
Normally, what a lot of people are used to seeing is the lines that strung across the road, and the cars count off as they go.
Exactly.
Can you explain how this was done?
How this is different?
Yes.
Sure. So, often the tubes are the way to go, you can get the data, and it's, it's just fine, there's nothing wrong with that data. But in this instance, because we do have the video files themselves, we actually did have somebody who was pressing a button to actually do the amount of time between each gap. So, we call it a board, right? It's the board that we just, you actually sit there measuring and looking at it for that one hour period to, yeah, it's a little tedious, but it's, it's good, solid data.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other specific questions that you'd like me to address?
Did you count specifically for this site? At the Board of Public Safety, there was a lot of questions brought up about using data from a different store?
Okay, so, one of the things about car washes is that there, the, the number of trips to and from the site varies dramatically, depending upon the day, the time, like, you know, like it's that first beautiful day after a nasty storm, everybody's going to get their car washed. But when it's, you know, an icky day, there's nobody going to get their car washed at that time. So, the data varies greatly, it's not like an office. If you're doing trip generation at an office, it's pretty much same time every day for things. So, what we actually did, because the IT data, the industry data is, it's just not as good for this type of site. So, what we did was take information for a very similar site in the Hoffman system in Binghamton. So, it's off of US Route 11, Upper Front Street in Binghamton, and it's a very, very similar facility. It's got one 160-foot tunnel, which is the same as proposed here, three locations for the cash pay system or the payment system, the difference being that this site is going to have 16 vacuums, and the site in Binghamton has 12 vacuums. So, that's the only difference between the data. But what we were able to do then was say that this is typically what, what Hoffman's is going to see on a facility, at a facility like this. It even has roughly the same number of vehicles, it's about 18,000, 18,500 vehicles on that roadway, and here by this site, it's closer to 16, 16,200-ish. So, it's a very comparable roadway characteristic as well for that data. So, that's why we actually used the site-specific data instead of IT data, because it's better. And in fact, IT tells you that if you have site-specific data, that's better information, to just use that. So, that's why we did that.
And I believe that was addressed by, the peer review as well.
Absolutely, yes. I don't know if there were other things that we needed to?
Just one thing I was going to add to that, in terms of the similarities, is we talked about that, because of the hospital and when people were getting out, that our peak road hour, the peak, the, the, it was really after the hospital shift was getting out, and it was between 3:00 and 4:00. The, the Binghamton site that Alana was referencing also has a similar peak at that, that hour. So, they, they're comparable in more ways than one.
If there's no questions, I'll just take my seat.
I got a quick one.
Yes, sir.
Is, on any given road, be it a state road, a county road, a city road, is there, what's the, what's the bureau, or what's the regulation that says, okay, at this point, a dangerous situation is developing, and we've got to make a change? I mean, we've got the police chief, we've got the fire chief, which to me are very relevant, you know, site-specific, they know the history, they know the application.
Yes.
Does the state ever get involved?
They do, yes. So, the state has a, a crash monitoring system where they do on a regular basis, and it's not just the state roadways they get monitored, they, they monitor the roadways throughout the entire state, and identify locations where there might be more than a typical number of crashes. So, they do, they pay attention to that, they look at it on roadways by like, it'll be like a whatever, three-mile segment, and every tenth of a mile, they look at the data and see if it's characteristic, or if there's a problem. And in fact, they have a brand-new system, the CLEAR system, that allows municipalities a lot more flexibility to actually get into that data and see for themselves what's available.
Okay. So, is, is the test that you took, is this compared to make sure it kind of passes to what this says to the state requirement?
Yeah, I, so, in our scope of services, we did include a crash evaluation because there's no reason to indicate that there is a crash problem at this location. And having the two-way left turn lane along the front edge of the roadway itself is very helpful for your corridor, getting people in and out, it means there's fewer apparent crashes, fewer right angle crashes, there's a lot of good things about your roadway system.
One, one other topic that we didn't, we talked about when we presented to you before, is that we do have, the amount of cars that can be onsite at any particular peak time is 39, and we're not counting anything inside the, the tunnel there. With the numbers that Alana was saying, for our peak hour, that right there is about 50% of what would become, so throughout that whole hour, it's kind of like you have a, a safety valve built in onsite there. And so, before anything gets out to there, to the road, you have all of that flow there. Then, if there is a high peak period, which are really not as often as, as it's made out to be, you know, people will generally say, "My car's okay, until I can come back in an hour," kind of thing. But during those times, when people really want to get all that crud off their car, there are peak periods, but we, we had, on another project that we had done, we had talked about how that is really maybe, you know, four, four times during the winter that you have that kind of a peak event. This, this condition here is just not going to be one of those where people are going to be backing up, they're going to have plenty of room in, in the site to accommodate the volumes that are going to be there.
Okay, that answers your question. Anybody else have any other questions for Alana?
All right, so Deputy Chief Modar from the Fire Department sent me an email Friday, April 12. "We do not see anything different than what we see currently, and what will become more in the future as the city continues to grow, that will be the traffic flow. There is room to run down the middle of the road for emergency currently. If that doesn't go away, we find to mitigate traffic. If there is room to have a turn lane into this property off Broad Street, this may help alleviate backing up, coming into the city and having cars utilizing the middle lane to go around other cars. Those are the only concerns I have." Chief, Deputy Chief Modar.
Check the, is the fire company?
Fire Department. And then on April 3, Jared Smith sent an email, "Good morning, we've had seven accidents in that quarter since January 1, '22 to date. The times in which these are occurring varies. Chief Modar may have a different opinion on whether or not fire trucks and ambulances have issues getting through, but I know we do not have any issues gaining access with patrol vehicles even at peak volume times. I have reviewed the traffic study, and from a public safety perspective, I see no issues with it. Please let me know if you need anything further. Thank you, Dear Jared Smith, Chief of Police, Glens Falls Police Department."
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else that needs to edit this?
No, I believe we've, the applicant has satisfied the Water Sewer Department, Chief of Police, and Fire Department, and the peer review has demonstrated that the applicant's traffic study is acceptable.
Okay, I am going to open up for public hearing. I would like to ask, is there anyone in the front row who would like to speak first? I can't see behind the board. If you could, please state your name for the record. Is that, is that your?
My name is Christine Van Valles Haley, I am the owner of the property, 194 Broad Street, Glens Falls. The property's been in my family for 56 years. I have worked there for 45 years. I put it on the market about a year and a little bit ago, because I want to retire, I'm approaching 70, and I'm tired, and my energy is weaning. Different people have looked at it, nothing has materialized. So, when Hoffman's came through with an offer, I was very happy, because I think they will do a great job at doing the landscaping, the building that they do, maintaining the property. I know they treat their people very well, they pay them well, they have benefits, health benefits, tuition benefits, all kinds of things that I think will just be a good company for the community and the people in the area. So, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Was there anybody else in the front row? Anybody over here in the front row? I'll go to the second row. Is there anyone from the second row? Can't see what made Frank.
I want to take that chance.
No, that's fine, I just, if there was anybody, is there anyone from the third row that would like to speak? Sure.
Thanks for allowing us to speak today. It seems, you know, coming in here, my name's Melissa. Sure, Melissa, I was getting there. Melissa Seal, I'm a resident of Glens Falls, I'm also a business owner. I own Wellchild, a behavioral health, pediatric behavioral health agency on Broad Street. And I'm also the wife of the owner of Adirondack Car Wash, just to be completely transparent. You know, I have a couple of concerns, and I, I was kind of hoping you guys would ask a couple more questions in regards to the traffic information that was brought forth today. A couple of inconsistencies. At the safety meeting, they brought up a comparison, Car Wash at the safety meeting as Oneonta, and now it's changed to Binghamton. Oneonta was not a good comparison, even though they said it was. They have their own traffic light to let traffic go in and out of Hoffman's, and that was used as a comparison. was used as a comparison. So quickly, they they, well, they switched gears and now Binghamton is being used. Well, Binghamton has four lanes across, two lanes on either side. So even though the building is a comparison, the traffic is different. Another thing in looking at the traffic study, that two thousand and thirteen numbers were used when two thousand and twenty-two numbers are available, another thing. What we have at the safety meeting, a representative from Hoffman said that the traffic strips were put across the road. He was quickly corrected and said, no, that was not done, and he recanted. The strips, looking, having someone ding a counter for an hour, I think we can all agree, is a little bit different than having strips over a course of an extended period of time because the traffic patterns in that area vary greatly. I know at eight o'clock in the morning, after I drop my son off to school and I'm going to my office, that's a bad traffic time. It's backed up. There's even backup from Dunkin' Donuts, getting into Dunkin' Donuts, there's a lot of traffic. It seems like this is set up to show why this is going to be approved. When I was at the safety meeting, a representative from the Fire Department that was there said there was concerns about ambulances getting through. I worked for Glens Falls Hospital, I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner, I worked in the ER prior to that. Primetime of shift change, three o'clock, a majority of the staff worked seven A to seven P, twelve-hour shifts, that's what we're seeing now at Glens Falls Hospital, to pinpoint that as a primetime. Another time where they did the little counter was Tuesday at eleven-thirty AM. This was brought up at the safety meeting. These are questions, you know, for when we're looking at the community as a whole, what will benefit the community, that I would hope you guys would ask. Because, believe me when I say, when they want to present information, they're not going to come forth and gather information and say, you know what, guys, this isn't a good idea, this wouldn't be good for traffic. They want this to go through. They've already purchased the property, they're ready to go. And I want you guys to take the time to halt and say, wait a second, are we looking at the correct information? Do we have the correct numbers? Let's get a broader view of the traffic patterns because I'll tell you what, one lane on either side on a road where we're having more businesses, and Glens Falls is growing, thank God, we're doing many amazing things in our city, and we are growing. But to have a business where cars go in and out occasionally versus a business where there is a constant flow, please look at some of the Hoffman's in the area. So and they have their own traffic lights in a lot of the locations because of that traffic problem. We're looking at a two-lane road with not much space in between, cars turning out, cars turning in, pedestrians, this is a very busy thoroughway for our city, leading to the hospital. And we're hoping it's going to get busier, but to accommodate a business where cars are going in and out continuously, you guys have admitted, some of you have the Hoffman Pass, there, the Hoffman Pass introduces more vehicles, more traffic. And in regards to Mr. Hall recusing himself from from voting, why, why did you vote initially? If now all of a sudden, why is it a problem?
I was not employed by your husband at that time.
Okay. So I I want to make sure that we're we're looking at everything and not just being spoon-fed the information that they they want you guys to to see because they're going to skew it in their direction. If you live in Glens Falls, and this is the discussion we had in the safety meeting, just being a resident of Glens Falls, you know that that is a busy road, it is a two-lane road. And if we're getting backup for Dunkin' Donuts, what is that going to look like for a Hoffman Car Wash? And Glens Falls Hospital is a main hospital for not only our area, but going into Vermont, it is a trauma area, where we get a lot of trauma at Glens Falls Hospital that now gets shipped off to Albany Med and some of the other hospitals, but that is a main trauma facility for this area. And if it's your loved one, they're going through at a time where it's a busy time for the the car wash, and you're delayed, seconds mean lives. This is something to heavily consider moving forward. So I'm just asking that you you take a look and really look at the information, and just because they want to give you, why Binghamton now and Oniata, it was Oniata before, ask these questions, really make sure you have the correct information and that you feel good about this moving forward instead of setting it up for, we were good, guys, this is why we're approving it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the third row that's... Please?
So my name is Matt Calucci. I own multiple commercial buildings in Glens Falls. I also own a large transportation company called Premier Plus Travel and Tours. So we, first issue I wanted to bring, so we, I have some concerns about the water and sewer. So we bought a building on one fifty-four Warren Street. It was Dr. Lee Heinz building for forty years. Months after we bought it, it was completely filled, the whole basement with sewage.
This is on Warren Street?
Warren Street, one fifty-four Warren. So it ended up costing us hundreds of thousands in damage. We obviously had to reach out to Glens Falls and their insurance company, and they did a horrible job dealing with us. Their insurance company actually like laughed at us and said, we'll bring you to court, drag it out for three years. We hired an attorney, they didn't take our attorney serious at all. So me and my mom have spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this building, you know, like destroyed us. So I have pictures, I don't know if you guys want to look, of the sewage, that we have like a hundred pictures of the photos of what happened. We were there, we spent months of people with hazmat suits in there, our business was like kind of put to a halt. And even talking with the crews, there's, there's a lot of other issues that I've come to find out, people having sewage issues in their basement in Glens Falls. I think it's like a huge issue. So I think it should be looked into much, much more with, I don't know, some of these studies that they've been showing you, but I know personally, a lot of people have come forth with, because we were pretty vocal. My mom reached out to the the mayor, and originally they were going to meet for lunch, but that didn't happen. So yeah, it's been, it's been a big issue for us. In terms of my transportation company, we avoid that area already. We we actually just got approved for medical transportation too. We've increased our fleet to heat vehicles, we're going to be adding five more. So we have serious concerns in that, you know, already, I actually live close to West Mountain, so I go every morning to my office and then home, and I already avoid the area going home, I have to go different routes. So I have like serious concerns, I know a lot of the community does. So yeah, I'll just kind of bring that to you guys' attention. And I, I mean, if you guys want to look through, I have hundreds of photos of what happened to us.
Are you asking for to look at your footage?
Well, just to see, I mean, I think there's a lot of hidden water and sewer issues in Glens Falls that could come to rise.
I understand that on Warren Street, I'm just trying to correlate how the Warren Street property correlates.
It's an issue everywhere, like, I think it's an issue everywhere, as soon as, when you have bad rainstorms, every time the water would rise, the sewage would flood into our basins. We had actually spent like five grand just to stop it from happening after the second time. I just, I'm just raising issues, I I've heard that all over Glens Falls, there's big issues going on.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else back there in the third row? Sir?
My name's Ralph Ramalda.
Say that again.
Ralph Ramalda. It's funny how we have all these, you know, these traffic pattern analysis and and everything else, and I think when you live in this community, all you have to do is take a drive down the street any day of the week. I lived on fourteen Hudson for a couple of years. It would take me twenty-plus minutes sometimes to get to eighty-seven, or twenty minutes plus to get back. You continue to add, or you continue to constrict a two-lane road, and you want to add to that. You're, you know, you're going to continue to constrict business. How many times have we wanted to, you know, go downtown to get something to eat? I live up in Lake George now. We want to go down to Glens Falls to get something to eat, but we don't want to go through the traffic patterns that are created already. You know, to Melissa's point, I mean, all you have to do is look at Dunkin' Donuts every day, and they have traffic all the way backed up, people trying to get in. I think it affects, you know, you continue to constrict access to Glens Falls, and it's going to continue to hurt this community. You're rebuilding South Street, Bonaccio, I believe, is coming in and putting in more apartments. I'm sure the people that are paying rent in those apartments aren't working in Glens Falls, they're probably working in Saratoga or Albany. You're adding twenty, twenty-five minutes to their commute just to get to the highway, let alone what Hoffman's will do. I mean, anybody can see on Quaker Road, which is a four-lane highway, in a middle section, a large middle section, and they still have backups going back to Della on some of their busier days. I think it's just, it's plain common sense, and you introduce this business into an area that's already restricted, it's just going to make it worse. And we're not all emergency vehicles where people are going to pull over. And you're also going to have people, you know, it happens all the time, they're trying to make a left into the Car Wash, and you may create a left-hand turny one, but they're going to block it a little bit, so you're not going to be able to go around. I mean, it's just, so it's going to back up towards, who knows, Stewart's and towards the hospital. I mean, it's just, you can look at all the traffic patterns in the world, but we all know because we all experience it. When I came here today, I got off the exit at four thirty-five, I parked at four fifty-two. I mean, it's, it's just common sense. And I hope when you think about this decision, you use your common sense, and there's people in the community who suffer as a result, and you're just going to add onboard commutes. You're going to limit the people that come into Glens Falls to go out to dinner, to enjoy Fountain Square Outfitters, or go to the small businesses. I think it has an effect on that because people don't want to get involved in that kind of traffic. You know, it would take me, from exit twenty, I lived off exit twenty, takes me fifteen minutes to get from there to my office at exit sixteen. It takes me twenty minutes to get from fourteen Hudson to eighty-seven in the morning, and then another, you know, ten minutes to my office. So you just add on that much more because the traffic is just so congested, and that's just the reality of the situation. And I hope you guys consider that in some of your thinking.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. How are you? Dr. Stamplift, I'm the downtown attorney here on one hundred Glen Street, and part of my job every day is to drive, the fact that I drive it all day and I barely made the meeting, mostly for the same reasons that Ralph mentioned. I I think about this traffic study and the sewer study as heart disease and irritable bowel syndrome. You know, we talked about the constricting of this artery of of traffic that leads to the Glens Falls Hospital from not just the north way, but from several of the communities that feed and flow toward the heart, which is the Glens Falls Hospital in this analogy, I suppose. But I think it's a real disease, as Ralph had mentioned, and I think Ms. Seal's words were very articulate on on these issues. I don't, I don't think we're taking the right medicine. I think that the problem is only going to get worse in the information that's been provided, and I I'm baffled as well about this whole switch from Oniata to Binghamton. I don't think the traffic committee considered the switch. I was at that meeting, and I think the wholehearted disapproval of the project is not so much that it's of acceptable industry standards, it's not acceptable for Glens Falls. It's not particular to Glens Falls. I don't understand this study either with a human, you know, for an hour clicking a button, I can't imagine the number of errors that must have been made. That's why we have the the types of data collection services that are appropriate and are more for acceptable standards. I submit that the information you have is a very narrow scope, and one that is particularly narrow for its own reasons, so this project can be approved and they can pull one over. Sewer is another issue. The, as I understand it, I don't pretend to be an engineer, but I do understand that the city recently, within the last, I think, couple of years, put in a new system that allows for a certain overflow to go into the Hudson River. And I think the most precious precious resource that we in Glens Falls and here as the gateway to the Adirondacks has is our natural resources. And we've, for those of us who've grown up here, we know what we went through to clean up the Hudson River with the various industries who polluted it for decades. And I think what's important here is that the system that's designed, is set up, as I understand it, that when there is excessive flow, to bypass the system and and drain this excess directly into the Hudson River. It's designed, as I understand it, when there are periods of high rainfall, for example, and the study, as I understand them, account for that to happen on a periodic basis, you know, when there's springtime, heavy snow now, something like that. But now we're talking about basically doing it every day. I don't know, do you know what the water discharge flow rate is from this facility or perspective to be on a daily basis? Car washes produce a lot of water every day, and much like the artery problem when you have a heart attack, is that you're pushing a lot of pressure from a system that in some areas is older. And we get to the point of the Hudson River where it's designed to, on occasion, discharge into the Hudson. Was that included in the SECA review? Did that environmental impact, was that considered? And I'd asked this board to take a closer look at that. It seemed like it was important for the board to ask for the traffic committee's advice. That's why we went to that meeting and that's why it's back here. But now the report's changed from one city to another city. Well, shouldn't they get a chance to comment on that? Because who knows whether this report satisfied their concerns? Do we have an updated report from the traffic committee that says that? Is the peer review really satisfactory to that committee? I don't know. Do you know? Art, take it out there. So I don't want to repeat some of the things other people said, I just wanted to give you my take on it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just for the record, the Board of Public Safety issues advisory opinions only and does not approve or disapprove of projects. This board has courtesy asked for your input, they did issue an unfavorable opinion, they completely dismissed the traffic report. It was offered to the Board of Public Safety to have a peer review, and they said they didn't need that or want that. That is why the city undertook a peer review from an outside, third-party barter and judges, and that report you do have, with respect to how much water or sewer is going to be used by Hoffman. We do have that, owners, they will provide it to you in the Water Sewer Engineers Report, and that was confirmed by our own water superintendent as well as our engineer. With respect to the issue regarding SECA, this board did a complete SECA review at the meeting of February sixth, twenty twenty-four. This action was classified as an unlisted action. We reviewed the part one, and we read every question into the record, and this board already issued a negative declaration relative to SECA.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Michael Seal, and I don't know if...
I don't know if everybody received the email I sent out to all the board members this Saturday morning. Did everybody receive that? Okay, you got a chance to review what I was talking about there. I'm not sure if I should read that into the public, but just be a little time-consuming. It's a little lengthy.
Can you summarize it? That would be great.
Sure. So basically, I've, I've got some issues with both sides of this, the sewer. Not so much the water as much as the sewer, and also the, you know, the major issues with the traffic. So I own the car washes directly across the street from the site, from Steve's place. And, you know, contrary to probably most beliefs is that I'm not really concerned about competition as much because I think that's actually good in some cases. And I, I do, just as they brought up, it's a very different style of car wash. I mean, I'm mostly self-service. They're a tunnel. They're unlimited pass. They're, you know, their design is to ship them through as fast as they can and get them out. So it makes it more convenient for the person that doesn't have a lot of time. Because everybody's time poor right now. So they don't want to wait in line. Sometimes if it's Dunkin' Donuts, you get a coffee. If there's a line, I'll, I'll wait, I'll get a coffee somewhere else. Or if it's, you know, wherever it may be, you see the line, you just say, well, I'll go another time sometimes, okay? And then there's other times where you say, well, I'm going to wait because I want my coffee or I want my car wash. It's filthy. I need it done now, so I'm going to wait. And that happens kind of more than less. So it depends on what kind of person you are and how much time you have on your hands. So with that said, you know, taking away the, the competition side of it, I'm more, really more concerned about the, the traffic in the sewer. Those are the traffic because it's going to affect my business with the traffic. Because if the traffic's, right now, as it sits, without Hoffman's in there, I can barely pull out of my main location entrance, entrance and exit. I usually have to go a different route. I have to go onto Western Ave and I have to go over Luzern, you know, that route and go around to the traffic light. Because I just can't get out there. And people going the other direction can't turn in when there's cars in front of it. So that's just going to get worse. And then even the turn going to Western is going to get clogged up. So it, it, it's also going to, and I don't know that, you know, I tried to get a little bit of the, the point across to other people that, you know, this is going to affect their, their businesses as well. Because people that I've talked to are already saying, I'm just going to avoid the corridor. I think you heard that earlier too, today. So that's going to happen more and more. And when that happens, oh, great for, you know, say somebody like Hoffman's that says, oh, now there's more room for me to, you know, have cars come in and go out. But what about all the other businesses that they're avoiding that corridor that would have went to the Hanford, the Walgreens, the CBS, the Dunkin' Donuts, the, all the other businesses that are along, and the main route to get to Glens Falls? Because if you are in Lake George, the best, easiest route to get to Glens Falls would be get off at exit eighteen and go that route. It seemed to be the fastest. And now it seems to be, would be faster to go through exit nineteen and travel down through. And if they do that, get off exit nineteen and travel down through, what they're going to find is they're going to stop at other shops. They're going to stop at Dunkin' Donuts there instead of the one on, on Broad Street. They're going to stop at the fast food joints there, not anything that's down below. They're going to stop at the Hanford on the other side. They're going to stop at all the other shopping centers that they'll pass on the way down through because a lot of those shops may be spontaneous. So those are, those are concerns about the heavier traffic flow. And then there's also the, the, you know, the traffic study. I have a lot of issues with the traffic study. My experience with the traffic studies are that I've had traffic studies done from professionals for other businesses. Other car washes in particular that I've built for other people because I also build car washes for other people all over New York State. And I have also, my relation has, my brother is actually the head of the TMC in Syracuse and six counties around that. He runs the traffic control in major, all these counties, one hundred and seventy-five employees. He also, I also have another relation that's a civil engineer that does traffic studies. So, you know, I'm not as equipped as he is to, or they are, or even this CTM, to, you know, do these traffic studies, but I do understand them. And what I do understand is just like a lot of other things, like appraisals or things like that, that the information that you put in is the information that you're going to get out. So if you put low numbers in, you'll get low numbers out. If you put high numbers in, you're going to high numbers out, depending on what you're looking to do that report for. And not to say that nothing was done improperly or unprofessionally because it's a very professional report. It's very nice. It's done very well. And on its surface, it looks, you know, like it's tacked all, crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. However, you know, I look at it and I pick out all these things that I see, these errors. And these errors are, you know, kind of major input numbers. And those input numbers is just what I was talking about. One is they use traffic study from two thousand thirteen. And they said that was the most current. And in fact, it's not the most current. And matter of fact, you know, I pulled up the exact same site that they used. And this is what is actually the most current. So you see the two thousand thirteen numbers, and then they stayed flat all the way through until they did new numbers. And then those new numbers were two thousand twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. So there's actually numbers from twenty-two, which I also printed up to show the actual numbers. And they did a professional report where they did do a system where they put lines out and tracked it in a, in a better manner than just pushing a button. Not saying that that doesn't work because if you don't have any of that, that's what you would do. Because the lines on the road, that takes a lot longer. So these are the studies from two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. They're fifty pages long, and it shows weeks of that. And in those studies, they can tell you what kind of car it is. They tell you what traffic, which way it's going. They can tell you the miles per hour that the car is going. They know it's a truck, an eighteen-wheeler. They know, they know speeds. They know everything from that study, from those. They're, they're much better than what they used to be, you know, thirty years ago. So that, in a situation like this, is what I believe needs to get done to get a proper traffic study. And I understand that they did a peer review, and I'm not doubting that the peer review was done professionally as well. Because they're looking at, did they do everything right? Did those numbers compute the correct way? Did they put them in in the proper spots? And I believe they did, but they just used lower numbers to get their point across. It's kind of like giving an appraisal on a house. You get ten houses at three hundred thousand and seven houses at a hundred thousand. And you needed that number to be a hundred thousand, well, they could use the, the seven that are a hundred thousand instead of the three that are three hundred thousand. Unless you need it to be three hundred thousand, then we could use those three that are three hundred thousand. And you'll get that, to that number of three hundred thousand. So very similar that with the traffic studies. So again, I'm not saying that they did anything wrong. It's just that their, their numbers are skewed. And the numbers that they use for the car wash, the Hoffman's car wash sites, you know, I went to the sites. I videoed the sites and watched. So I have proof of all of this stuff on regular days that they had cars coming out, which I said in the public safety meeting, at thirty seconds per vehicle coming out of the tunnel. It's actually fifteen seconds per vehicle. That's how fast they're pumping those cars. That, that equates to two hundred and fifty cars an hour, not the seventy-eight cars in and seventy-eight cars out that they put in their report for four hours, a four-hour term. So this is an hour that two hundred and fifty cars going in and out. That's right down the road at Hoffman's car wash in Quaker Road. That's twenty-two seconds at the one in Oneonta. That's twenty-one seconds on average, because I averaged the whole thing out for the six hours of cars coming out of that location at twenty-one seconds at the Oneonta, at the Binghamton location. The other locations do, like, like my wife had said, that they have traffic lights at some of those locations. That's a whole different world. You can't even use that in, in the equation because that's not what we have here. Those cars, if they get backed up, it only hurts Hoffman's. That's it. Because Hoffman's would get backed up inside. They might have to shut the tunnel off. But it's not going to stop traffic. It's not going to stop the flow. Where here, it will stop the flow. It will stop the flow of traffic. It will stop an ambulance from getting through, stop a fire truck from getting through. I mean, I just did a little, a little demonstration just to give you an idea of what this may look like. I'm not sure if it's going to be big enough for you guys to see this, but you look at this, this is the Hoffman's location. This is the car, my car wash here. This would be an ambulance coming in, okay? So they've got the green light, or even red, it doesn't matter for an ambulance. They're going to go right through it anyway. But here's the cars pulling into the Hoffman's site, okay? And here's the car saying, well, I'm going to go around those cars because I'm in a hurry. I'm not waiting to go into Hoffman's. I'm going around them. So they go around them. But also this way is coming, car says, I want to go to Hoffman's. So I'm going to turn left into the lot, and I'm going to wait in the middle lane because why wouldn't I wait in the middle lane? And I'm not going to stop all the traffic going south to the northway. So I stop in the middle lane. Now you see what you got going here. You got a bottleneck. And I'm just showing this just quickly. I can do twenty different, you know, examples of this. But now this ambulance comes through, there's no place for any of these cars to go. These cars can't get out of the way. These cars can't get out of the way. You'd be pulling up on curbs if you had to, which they will. And I've done before. When ambulance came behind me, there's no place to go. I pulled right up onto the curb. They let them go by. Okay, but I don't know if a lot of people would do that. And I have a truck. So some cars would just hit the curb and do damage to their car. So they would have to push their way through. And like my wife said, working in the ER, minutes, seconds and minutes are lives. So that's a big deal for an ambulance to get through there. Or, and now it's the other way around too, because now when a trauma comes in, the trauma gets to Albany, or gets to Glens Falls, and then they say, oh, this has got to go right out to Albany. Sometimes they airlift them, but other times they go in the car. And that traffic delay could cost another life going the other way. So either way in the direction, you have an issue with traffic. So, and again, I could do, you know, multiple demonstrations, and so I actually have a bunch of them in my, in my car. But I thought this would be the easiest one to show you. So in, in conclusion, the traffic is not going away. It's getting bigger and bigger. And I'm not sure, when I was at the meeting, I heard them say there was nothing new, new business that was going to affect the traffic moving forward. And that's just simply not true either. And we have three hundred units going in that aren't even done yet. Some are finished, but they're not rented. We have, we have another Bonaccio building going up. We have, I mean, just, it, it, it's great. It's great for the area. I see that. But those numbers, those units that are going in are going to increase the traffic into, into and from Glens Falls. Alone, it, it's just a given. You can't dispute that fact. And I don't know, you know, if anybody took that into consideration. I know all of you know because you probably approved all these projects that are going on. But these are hundreds of units that are going to be filled with more people and more cars driving through Glens Falls. Not only that, but you also have the expansions going on on the other sides of the town, on both sides of, you know, South Glens Falls. All these cars, what do we want? We want them in our city. We want them coming to go to dinner at our restaurants. We want them going to our shops, to our car washes. We want them here. So we're restricting that by, like, like, I think Mr. Stankliff said about an artery just bringing in and just putting pressure into it. You know, at some point it's going to burst. And that, that's where people just, worst against people saying, I'm not going, I'm not going through there. I'm not going into that, into that city. And then everybody suffers and then businesses start going away. So I think that's something that really needs to be thought about a lot more than just listening to a, a quick study that, you know, took two days. And, you know, I don't know if it's really even representative of the, you know, the numbers that are, you know, potentially going to be produced through that car wash at that location. There's no way to tell. But if they use historic numbers, those are those historic numbers, two hundred and fifty cars per hour, not seventy-eight per four hours for, for its peak time. One more note on the, on the septic side of it and sewer side of it is that, you know, what I do know about the car wash business is that when you're, you're reclaiming about sixty percent of the water. Now you can claim that you can do more, but realistically, it's sixty percent of the water. That's a really good reclaim system. And those reclaim systems cost a lot of money to maintain, okay? And they also produce not the cleanest water when you're, when you're doing them, but they're, it's decent enough to rinse cars off. So the rinsing section is in the beginning, where you're dumping, flooding the car with water. You'd probably see that if anybody's been to the car washes. They flood the car with water in the beginning. That's all the reclaimed water. And then afterwards, it's all fresh water. So if that fresh water is going through at a rate of even, say, twenty-five to forty gallons of fresh water, which is so low, if you can think about a shower is thirty-two gallons of water, that, that's per car. If they're doing a hundred and fifty thousand cars, that's a couple million dollars, that's a few million gallons of water that they're using and pushing out. That's not getting reclaimed. It's going out. And if the reclaim ever stopped or failed, that's sixty percent more than, more than that. So you could have four million gallons right away if you went on the high side of it, of water going into the system. And then if the system failed, you could have almost seven million gallons going into the system. And I'm not sure if they even think about that failure aspect of it. Because just like the failure of heavy rains that they were talking about, is it on occasion? Well, that's all we need is the occasion. That's all we would be reflecting on is the occasion. The occasion that the ambulance can't get through, the occasion that it causes accidents, the occasion that nobody can get through to their business or their home. The occasion that the sewer blows out and floods and floods their basements. I've had my house flooded. I live in Glens Falls. I've had my house flooded in the basement, just like he had said. Now granted, is it, it doesn't have to be connected like, like Ethan had just mentioned, Ethan Hall. He said that, well, that's on Orange Street. But everything goes in the direction to the sewer plane. So anywhere that it clogs, it's going to clog the rest of it up. Now, we just redid that corridor years ago, widened it. So that line, even in just the years before, they just admitted that it was clogged considerably. That they just scoped it and cleaned it all out for us. And then it goes into old lines, old lines that are, you know, in some cases a hundred years old. And these lines that are blowing out, we just had a blowout just in the, that just came up in the, in the news. So you guys all, I'm sure if you're reading the news, that just, so they're fixing that one. And then the next one's going to blow out, and the next one's going to blow out, which is also going to affect traffic. Because now they're quarantining these roads off and fixing all those, then they have to repair the road. And in the meantime, traffic has to go around it. So there's, you know, another issue with, with the traffic that's related to even the sewer, sewer systems that are problematic. And that, yes, when we have heavy rains, heavy flow, that then it flows into the Hudson River. That's the failsafe. But what if the heavy flow comes from a heavy user? What if that's the, the number that, you know, pushes it over? What about when all those apartments are built, all those apartments are rented, and twenty other businesses from now to then that are built and using the water in the sewer systems? What about that? What about them? Because you can't go back later and say, yeah, let's take the heaviest users and not let them do it anymore. And nobody checks, by the way, I think I put that in my, my email. There's no checks and balances on reclaim. Nobody goes back in after the CEO and says, hey, you guys still using that? Hey, is this still working? There's no annual inspections. There's nothing governed in that. So the minute they open up, they can just go click, do a couple valves and turn it off. And just use fresh water because it might actually be cheaper. Less cleanup for the brushes, less cleanup for the employees, users are work, work with, cleaner, smells better. So there's a lot to consider with this car wash. It's not the ordinary user. This is not just a convenience store going in, a gas station going in. Yeah, I mean, these, these customers are going in and out in twenty seconds. That's a lot of traffic going out to that. And that's, you can't equate that with these studies that they're putting in and saying that it's only going to be a twenty-second delay. That's quoted, twenty-second delay in traffic from this project going in. And that's just simply not true. And anybody who lives in this area, anybody who drives this trip knows very well. And I have proof of all this. Anybody who wants or interested, I emailed you guys, so you can always just reply to email. I have video clips. I have all the articles. I have traffic studies. Anything you need to look at. And I tried to give this all before the review, but I had a lot of friction. And nobody really wanted to talk to me or, or get any of my information before the review. And that's skeptical to me, but they didn't want any of the information. They said, nope, professionals are doing it. We'll take care of it. And that was the end of it. So here we are. So I hope you guys, you know, make the right decision and do, do your due diligence. Because it's going to affect the whole area, the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I will have you reapproach in address.
Good evening again. Alana Moran, a professional engineer with VHB. I just wanted to make one clarification for everybody in the room. And it concerns the age of the data that was used for the analysis. We put a paragraph in our studies that gives the total volume of traffic on the roadway for contextual purposes. I used the wrong number. I used one from two thousand thirteen instead of two thousand twenty-two. So that data that Barton Lujus put in their letter is that, yes, that is that the data from DOT has two thousand twenty-two data. Now, when it comes to the actual analysis of the intersections and the actual level of service capacity, that data is from two thousand twenty-four. We did video counts, which is the standard practice now for turnover of account data, is to do videos. It's also standard practice for, we still use the tube data, but it's not as accurate as cameras. So generally speaking, when you have a roadway with high So generally speaking, when you have a roadway with higher volume like this one, you would also use cameras instead of tubes to get that vehicle speed, vehicle classification, volume, all of that type of information. So in this instance, we used video cameras to collect data in 2024 for the analysis presented within the report.
And that's noted as comment number three on the Barton La Judas report, and corrected the 2019 annual average daily traffic to the 2022.
Correct.
And it also stated that it is noted that this data is a reference to the total average daily volume that the roadway services, this data is not used for any of the traffic analysis that has been completed.
Correct, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark?
Sir.
Good evening all, I'm Attorney Mark Schachner. I'm the senior partner at Miller-Matic, Schachner &amp; Hafner, just a couple of blocks away. It's super annoying to spell my last name, that's how it's spelled. I didn't create it, I would have spelled it differently if it was up to me. I just thought I'd make a couple.
Spelling your mom in your ears.
Everybody, I, I spelled it. Um, I thought I'd try to put this in a bigger picture perspective, this debate. It's a very healthy debate, I want to commend your board, your planning board, for encouraging this healthy debate and for encouraging constituent involvement. I work for about two dozen municipalities, and many of the municipalities I work for are not as successful at two things that you've done very successfully. One, encourage public debate, and number two, progress in application through a process and enhance the information that you're making your decision on. You have a much enhanced base of information now than you had before, partially due to your diligence and your patience. And also the public providing some input that was, you know, prodding you to be more diligent and more patient, and gather more information. So I would just want to make a couple of big picture perspective comments. I'm not an engineer, I pretend to know a little bit about traffic engineering, but the important word in that sentence is the word pretend. Um, commercial growth means more cars, commercial growth means more cars. Where I live is a mixed residential and commercial, and I live six miles from here, 6.4 miles from here. And where I live, I was fortunate enough to have zero cars per hour except for mine, zero, 6.4 miles from here. Not zero cars per day, but zero cars in most hours. Now, I probably have a dozen in most hours, okay? That's, that could shock my conscience if I were a certain kind of person, but you know what? A dozen cars going by in an hour doesn't really shock my conscience or upset me much at all. So you have to keep it all in a perspective. A lot of the public comments have been based on, not based on empirical observation or traffic study data, and traffic study data is actually something of a science, or the gathering, I should say, of traffic study data, is something of a, of a science, it's not an emotional exercise. I deal with secret review issues on a daily basis. There's a lot of judgment calls in secret review that are not, that are not, that can't rely on empirical science. Traffic studies actually are empirical science. The Institution of Traffic Engineers Manual is a big fat Bible thing that I, like I said, I used to pretend to know something about. And our traffic studies have been done in accordance with the ITE direction, including using video instead of click, 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 click. Um, Barton La Judas has no ax to grind in this issue, in this application whatsoever. You all respond, and by you all, I mean the city. The city responsibly engaged an independent contractor to do expert peer review, and the conclusion of that expert peer review is that our traffic study is sound. Doesn't mean that there's not going to be any more cars coming into this area of Glens Falls. There could be and will be some more cars coming into this area of Glens Falls, just as there are some more cars driving by my house now. In fact, way, 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 you know, tenfold, a dozenfold, twentyfold, thirtyfold, but the net result is still very, very livable. The analogy I'm trying to make is, the last speaker, um, in opposition to the application, presented some pretty cogent thoughts that would lead to the conclusion of, our city is overburdened and overcrowded with some of these resources, and we need to shut the gates to commercial growth. Whether it's Warren Street, or Broad Street, or wherever, we need to shut the gates to commercial growth. I don't think any of us really think we need to shut the gates to commercial growth or want to. We still live and work in a beautiful city in which all these issues are being very well controlled, in large part not only due to your diligence, but in large part due to diligence of this very board. So from our standpoint, you have an obligation to make your decision based on the best data you can get, which we think you've now got. You've had it independently reviewed, and independently confirmed and corroborated. And if you continue to govern, not do your elected officials, but govern as a planning board, based on empirical data and the studies and the confirmation of those studies by your own fire department, police department, by independent engineers and the like, take your motion out of it, we think that the decision is pretty obvious in terms of sticking with your approval. I think that's basically how we see the big picture. Any questions? Thanks a lot for your time.
Great, thank you. Frank, anything else?
Only if there's a specific question.
So I'm going to go through our board and ask a question, ask if there's any members of the board that have questions, I'll start the time.
You clarified the fact that it was current data, it was 2022, 2024 was used and not the 2013.
Yes, that was, that was updated, and that was where the data, that's the data that was just.
And, and also with the video, it was actually done on that site?
Yes.
So, I mean, kind of kicking the can with O'nead or Binghamton, that doesn't matter. You've got an actual from that site on Broad Street, you've got the video, that's for the, okay. So, so the other comparison is really kind of, you, it's my opinion.
Well, I just want to clarify that the information, whether it was the O'nead site or the Binghamton site, that information was used for the trip generation. I misspoke, I thought the data that I had was from the O'nead site that was the Hoffman's, and it was the Binghamton site that was the Hoffman's. So that's where we got our trip, trip generation rate for the higher number of trips that we analyzed, as opposed to the ITE data, which isn't quite as good for a use like this.
So in other words, more conservative.
Right, okay. Um, I guess one of the questions too, that was, was a question whether, um, 78 cars in four hours are 250, which was used as far as.
So our trip generation, again, based upon the data for other specific Hoffman site analyzed, 158 total trips during the weekday PM peak hour, so 79 entering and 79 exiting, and then during the Saturday midday peak hour, 156. So 78 entering and 78 exiting. We also did a sensitivity analysis in this report that did an analysis of like double that, because there are those random days where it's higher.
I guess that's it, I mean, I feel comfortable now that at least current data was used and site-specific data was used. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Bell.
Now, the, the water usage and water going in, when we originally started this with you guys, it was 45 gallons per car, 15 gallons that was recycled water, correct, was your standard thing. And then I think the data then that we got was 140, uh, like, you know, prime time cars an hour, something like that?
The, the, the 79 cars in, 79 cars out is, that was what we were just talking about. So those cars, each one being washed with 45 gallons. Uh, we actually, again, to be conservative, the balance that Hoffman's has figured out is 30 gallons of new, 15 gallons. We actually use 35 gallons to be more conservative in terms of any potential impact on the usage to the city.
So that number, that, that's the, your trip, you think it is 80 cars an hour?
So that's, so that's what it balances out. Now, one of the things, so that's the, the number of cars during that hour that is the peak time on the roadway. Also, in this case, happens to be what was the peak time down.
So you're saying comparative study on a, a similar highway set busy?
Well, no, we, what we're doing is we're saying that is the actual volume, uh, or the peak volume at this location. So the first thing that, uh, Alana does is figure out what that peak hour is. What I'm saying is the, um, the one down in, in the Binghamton area is, it turns out that their maximum time is similar to here, where there must be something that drives that traffic between 3:00 and 4:00. That is their maximum hour, and it's like 11% of the trips per the day. Then there's, they're spread out through the day, it's really kind of a bell curve. Middle of the day, um, where they see 10%, 10%, 10%, 11%, you know, that, that's the meat, the, the, the peak there. But, um, you know, the other thing in terms of water usage and everything is that that is not necessarily the peak time of water usage by other, um, by other uses, like such as a residential, you know, where they're using it more in the morning, before we might even be open, or in the after, or in the afternoon, or in the evening when they're cooking, and our peak has already gone by. So we put in the engineering report the total gallons per day, we applied a peak usage of that, all that was reviewed by the engineering staff.
What about, I mean, can you, I mean, the gentleman's here from the actual company. Quaker Road, when that, when that's busy near here, they're just comparing to traffic getting back up on the highway and will do. That's not running 80 cars an hour when that happens?
No, and the difference with Quaker Road, you know, because we tried to find, you know, a similar store. Quaker Road has the tunnel, just like ours, Quaker Road has three, three washbasque, um.
Yep.
Tom Hoffman Jr. with Hoffman Car Wash. You know, Mike may have seen 15 cars, or a car every 15 seconds, but Quaker Road has a conveyor as car wash, three A Bay automatics, six Bay Jiffy Lube, and a six Bay self-serve car wash. If we could possibly wash 240 cars an hour at every one of our locations, we would love it. But it's just not physically possible at a site like the Broad Street site. Um, Quaker Road has, you know, those four different businesses on one piece of property, where, with one entrance and exit. So the location on Broad Street is probably, what, you know, like half the traffic count? It, it's not going to be as busy of a site. Um, and then regarding water, and, and when, and if the city of Glens Falls sewer system has to discharge to the river, um, most car washes don't wash any cars on rainy days. So that's really not an environmental impact at all.
But just, I'm, I'm just asking here for, for our knowledge, where, when that thing's running, they're not counting, you know, the other three businesses there, but when that's running decent, I'm, I have.
Yep.
Is, is it 140 cars an hour that goes through there?
Oh, wait, yes, it can be, yeah. Um, but, but the conveyor isn't running at 240 cars an hour. It, it's physically impossible, I've only seen one car wash in my life do that, and it was in Buffalo, New York, where they don't have any spinning brushes, they just slingshot them through there like crazy.
Okay, well, what about, you know, this, and you guys are spending the money here, you obviously have done your market research. You know, there's a lot of competition opening up, and I've just recently heard that Title Wave now wants to go off X at 18 also. So is this, I mean, splitting the dollar, is that, are you guys thinking about that factor on that? With all, I mean, briefly, about five new car washes in the last few, three years?
Right, well, I think, you know, people value their time and, and the, the additional car washes in the marketplace, you know, the title waves and the splash car washes of the world, you know, offer the consumer more choices, and it's going to make all of our car washes actually probably a little less busy, actually. Um, and, and with, it's been proven, we have 31 locations now, we are not a traffic generator. People are on their way to Hannaford, or they're going to CVS, and they're going to stop at the car wash if, you know, they're, they're not making a home run from their home to the car wash and back again. We, we, we do very little traffic generation, we're just one stop on the trip, uh, when people are out and about. But, you know, to your point, of course, we think about the competition, and we try not, you know, to, um, you know, we're, we're trying to compete in the marketplace and offer the consumer better and more choices.
I was just wondering, because that's, I mean, if anything, that's probably that dollar, I mean, it's going to affect these, I mean, it'd be less. I mean, you guys do do a great job.
Sure.
Um, I have never been to the Title Wave, so I'm not familiar with their product.
Yep.
Okay. Rachel.
No, you guys asked the questions that I was going to ask. Um, I think you guys have done a nice job of providing the information. I'm really glad we got that peer review, because it does provide a bit of comfort. I agree with what Tony Schachter said, also that we are growing and we're going to, we are going to see a little bit more traffic there. I think a lot of our traffic problems come from Queensberry coming in, that we don't have any, this board has no control over what happens, you know, on the other side of Western. Um, and there is a lot of stuff there that causes traffic, I get it, I live in Glens Falls, I see the traffic too. But I think you guys have provided a lot of information to alleviate any of the concerns that we've had, and I clarified it today for me.
And lots of people brought up Dunkin' Donuts, that's in Queensberry. And those back up on the street, in Queensberry.
And, and an entirely different model, and the amount of space that is there onsite, uh, to run through there. Um, you know, we've probably all been there, and there's a little slowness at the window, but in the most parts, you just a conveyor belt through of, of, you know, place the order, pick up the order.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I feel like everyone has covered everything that we could ask for, so, thank you.
Yeah, can you cover just one other thing?
Um, I agree with Mr. Schachner, uh, you know, you can't close the doors on development and enhancing our, this community. Um, uh, and also knowing that we're going to have more development, either way you look at it, it's going to happen. Um, and that he said, you know, there's going to be another influx of, of traffic, any way you look at it. Not to say that everything's pieces of cream, uh, with this project, but I think it's a viable project, and it should go for it.
Do you have a question?
When you first got your approval, when you, do you have three lanes now, in and out?
Yes, so we, we kept what was on there originally, just so that everyone would know we weren't trying to, we, we do want to try to see that we were remit. The traffic study actually did that, um, analysis initially with just the single lane. But we, the, the difference here is three feet, so a foot and a half on each side to get the three lanes in there. So we're, we're.
So is that what you're going with?
We are going with that, yes.
So one lane to go in and two going out, one to turn left, one to turn right? And that will help with, you believe will help with the traffic?
It, it only enhances what, um, Alana's and VHB's study and the peer review has already addressed. It, it can cause no negative side effect.
So, did you have any?
No, my comments came during the first two meetings when you guys presented, and, um, I don't have anything else to add, those are in record, we addressed those.
Okay. What's the favor of the board?
Okay, your motion before four? Yes. Um, I would like to make a motion of the Glens Falls Planning Board acting as the board of Site Plan Review hereby grant site plan approval for the project identified as 23-0018 Hoffman Development Corporation, commonly known as 194 Broad Street, uh, as presented at the meeting of April 16th, 2024. No other conditions, with no provisions.
We have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm going to ask a roll call rule, please.
Commissioner, Nancy.
Yes.
Commissioner, Valdo.
Yes.
Commissioner, Mary.
Yes.
Commissioner, Hall.
Yep.
Commissioner, Andrew.
No.
And Commissioner, Ellen.
Yes. Abstain.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So the motion passes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's input. Uh, that being said, is there anything else for the board this evening? I would accept a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.